Hi, this is Canal. Sorry I missed your phone call. Please wait for your message and I'll get back to you. Thank you.
We're sorry, your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please check the number and dial again. We're sorry, your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please check the number and dial again.
Please enjoy this Verizon Ring Back tone while your party is reached.
Hello?
Are you there Commissioner Ivy? Are you there Commissioner Ivy?
Yep, yep.
Alright, very good. Alright, hang on one second. We're gonna start our Board of Equalizations meeting. Alright, welcome this morning. We have a one meeting before our commission meeting. It's a Board of Equalizations meeting. We have three items on our agenda. And here, I'm here as the anchor and Commissioner Ivy is on the phone. And so, with the, with this, I will suspend the rules so that I can second any motions that are, that are taking place. We have three items on there. Commissioner, Commissioner Ivy, on the first one, there's a, to approve the Board of Equalization Hearing Process Report. Any questions on that?
I did not have any.
Okay, I did not either. A motion to be in order?
I will move that we approve regular agenda item number one.
And I will second that motion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that passes two zero. Number two is to approve the Board of Equalization Assessor Approved Review Process Report. Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay, I didn't have any either. Motion to be in order?
I will move that we approve regular agenda item number two.
And I'll second that. All in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
That passes two zero. And the third one is approve the Board of Equalization Assessor's Initiated Appeals Report. Any questions?
I do not have any.
I didn't as well. Motion would be in order?
I'll move that we approve regular agenda item number three.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
That passes two zero. And I'll second that. All in, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we are now adjourned from the Board of Equalization. Thanks for coming for that long report and the good work that you're doing on it. I know there was a lot on there. There, there was a ton on there. A lot of work's been done. Alright, we'll shift now to our commission meeting and I'll, I'll get out of this one. And get to... Alright, hold on one second as I get to our agenda. Okay, we're good to go? Okay. So, welcome now to our, our Board of Commissioners meeting. I am, I'm serving as the anchor on this one and I'll be chairing this, this, this meeting. Commissioner Ivy is on the phone. And so, we do have our two commissioners present for a quorum. As, as always, we'd like to start with a prayer, reading or a thought and the pledge, and somebody that will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. We look to the audience if there's anybody who would volunteer to, to help us with either one of those two. Yes? Prayer? Would anybody like to lead us in the pledge? Thanks Randy. Okay.
Our dear Heavenly Father, as we come before thee at the beginning of this commission meeting, we thank thee for the many blessings that we enjoy as individuals working for the county and as citizens of Utah County. We are especially grateful for all the time and effort and resources that have been expended this last week. For all the wonderful efforts by individuals and others in assisting in our urgent fire situation. We ask thy blessings to continue to be upon those that are preserving property and that, that they might be protected. We are grateful to this point that there's been no major injuries and ask thy blessings to continue in that regard. And ask thee to continue to support and sustain those and support all the citizens in the south end of the county that have been misplaced, that they might be comforted at this time. Father, in this meeting, we ask that thy spirit might go with us, that we might be blessed to accomplish the work of the government here in Utah County, that there'll be a tone of understanding and civility and that all those that have to make decisions will be guided and directed. In these favors and blessings, we ask for, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you follow me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Commissioner Ivy, there, there's a group here that wanted to come and get on our agenda that didn't have a chance to and we typically do some recognitions at the beginning of the meeting. And so, if, if you're okay, I would like to, to have a personal preference and have them come up and, and just do an acknowledgement of some of the good work. Randy and the Veteran Services and do some of the, the work they're doing. Are you okay with that?
I'm, I'm great with that.
Okay. Come on Randy.
Commissioners, we want to thank you for allowing us to take the time to come up and do this. The American Legion this year is approaching its 100th anniversary. So, 2013, or 2019, we will be celebrating our 100th centennial. And we're proud to say that here in Provo, we've had our charter since August of 1919. So, we're part of that 100th celebration nationally. The American Legion continues to enforce the pillars of the American Legion where it's on Americanism, child welfare, national security, and we take care of our veterans. One of the ways that we're taking care of our veterans today is we've, we have developed what's called Robin's Tool Bin. David Smith came to us in October of last year and his wife, Robin, had passed away. So, he wanted to have all of those tools given to use for veterans because she used those tools to teach woodworking during the Veterans Administration conferences and trainings and she just did that to help, to help veterans to, to heal. So, in that process, we took those tools and we built what's called Robin's Tool Bin. So, instead of having a workshop, we've turned it into a trailer and because of the, the individuals that we're going to honor today and thank them for their contributions, we put all the tools in the tool bin and we take that around and we help veterans and we help single moms. So, those that are, are needed, we give them a hand up and not a handout. But we try to help those and especially those widows that have been left behind. So, we want to make sure that they're taken care of. And Robin's Tool Bin is do that. I'd like to first of all, recognize Leslie Zimmerman, who's actually running the program on our behalf. And if I could, Commissioner, could I have you come out and present these to them?
Absolutely.
Leslie Zimmerman is actually running the program on our behalf. She, she works with Doc and Gunny's and also I'd like to recognize her sister, Julia, with Doc and Gunny's. Julia is a retired Master Sergeant in the Marines. And Leslie is a medical discharge medic from the active army. She was a medic, so they have what's called Doc and Gunny's. So, Doc and Master Sergeant Gunny. We'd like to present that certificate to them if we could. And then, we'd like to bring up Jed Zimmerman, who actually did all the construction on the, on the tool bin and the design organization along with his wife Leslie. And then, we'd like to also recognize Andrew Watson. Andrew Watson owns Watson Motors and they actually purchased the trailers for what we have, what we've done with this. And he actually works with Julia pulling it around to get us to the locations where it needs to go. We also have several others that have donated to us. We have the Howard Jackson Foundation that helped us to purchase the trailer along with. But Andrew put all of the money into it to get it for us. We also have issue, issue designs that did that. And we have several others that did wrapping and stuff like that. We'll present to them later. But we wanted to recognize them publicly because of the service that it's giving to Utah County. Thank you.
It's kind of interesting. I happened, I don't know if it was a month or two, I can't remember. The, the time flies, but ran into him at Home Depot picking up, picking up stuff and we talked about this. It was kind of a interesting dialogue. So, thank you. Thank you for the great work that you do and continue to do. And that, that tool bin is, it, it's more than just a bin. It's a whole trailer. It's full. It's got a lot of stuff. I'm jealous. I wish I had that in my driveway. Believe me. It was, it's, a lot of work can be done out of that trailer.
I would second that. It's an amazing, amazing program and helping people who need it desperately. So, fantastic work.
Yes, thank you. And you can stay for the whole meeting if you want. I thought we'd do it at the beginning so you guys can, you know, maybe discreetly get back to helping out the veterans. Thank you. Alright, let's, let's move to building our agenda. We'll move everything to consent. And then, we'll pull things off of our, off of our consent agenda to be talked about. And again, if there's any, if there's any comments from the public on this, you can come up during our, our agenda item or after we build our consent, if you had something on consent that you want to talk about. So, so with that, on our, on our, on our original consent agenda, we had 18 items. Number one, if we could pull that off, just for some conversation to make sure we know what we're, what we're agreeing to. And then, numbers, numbers three, four and five, there was a comment on there from Mr. Thompson. He was just, he was just referencing that a transfer would be needed. There's not enough money in there now. I think that's probably looking for the Health Department. Are we, are we, we're fine with that?
Okay. Just realizing that there's not enough money there, but there's gonna have to be some transfers to... Right. This, I'm Heather Lewis with the Prevention Department and it's there invoiced and so if it's not, they invoice this monthly. One thing I do want to bring to your attention though, in the, in the contracts, there is this first box under section one. And these services provided should have been checked. The, the first four should have been checked. Actually, the first five. So, the bottom two shouldn't, but, so that needs to be changed on all of these.
Can we leave it on, can we leave it on consent with that note that those need to be checked? Are you fine with that then? Okay. Are you good with that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Then number, number 10, Commissioner Ivy, is alright if we table that?
That one, I had that for a table. Yep.
Okay, good. Any others on, on our initial consent agenda?
Nothing else for me on, on the original consent.
Okay, on our, on our regular agenda, if we could, if we could, could we table number one as well on our, on our regular agenda?
Yes.
For some discussion. And then, number two, number three, number four, we can leave on consent if we'll just change the time. It's, it has on there 9:00 AM and I think we've scheduled those times to start at three. I just didn't want people showing up at 9:00 AM.
Correct.
Should be at three. Is that, is that correct or is that? Oh, just on the fifth, yes. Just on October 5th. Sorry. Yeah, I, I just, if we're putting this out for public, one of them showing up at nine and then we don't come in till three, on the fifth, October 5th. So, we'll leave that one on consent with that noted change.
I'm good with that.
Any others?
Nope, I just had two and three for discussion, so.
Okay.
That one's for me.
Alright. Any, any discussion on that, that we've moved to consent? Okay, seeing none. If we go back, number one, Mr. Randy?
I can go ahead and kind of just talk about this briefly Bill if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
One of the things I've been engaged in is, as a co-chair with Stan Lockhart on the Intergenerational Poverty Committee for Utah County, which has been under the direction of the Intergenerational Poverty Committee from the state. The state issued a significant amount of money to be awarded out for IGP programs to, to various counties. When we worked through this process, when I originally worked on this grant, it was, we're under the impression that it was through the committee and not, not the county. And as it turns out, the county has to be the administrator of this. And that's why it wasn't brought forward initially before the application was sent in. There was a misunderstanding on my part on that. The county's commitment to that is a, a match that can be in kind donations, which would include use of computers, time or personnel. And it does not have to be new money. So, we can go through a process of identifying individuals who could administer this grant and their work would count towards our match.
Yes, very good.
That's kind of the basics, basics of it.
And so, and the reason why I held it was there was some, some wording in the original application that needed to be changed so that it did reflect that, so it reflected Utah County. Because the, the wording in there actually put Commissioner Ivy as responsible, so Utah County should be the one that's responsible. There is a change, we worked through day with this and I believe all three commissioners received a copy of it, of the, of the changes in there. I'm not gonna go down through and, and point out the differences between the changes. But in essence, it was just identifying Utah County as that representative with that change that Commissioner Ivy was talking about and we're the responsible parties. The only place that's left blank that we have not, and this will, this will have to be given back to the state. Hopefully, they'll, they'll accept it. I'm sure they will. But anyway, the only thing we have left blank right now is just the, the administrator on it and we'll, we're working through that. And that's, that's what we're doing is ratifying with this change, which I'll give to, to Renee.
Yep.
Okay. A motion to be in order?
I would move that we approve consent agenda item number one for ratification.
With the, with the noted changes?
With the noted changes.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Okay, three for five are taken care of. We tabled 10. So we're on, we're on now, now on regular agenda item number two, because we tabled number one.
Brandon? Brandon Larson, Community Development Staff. Before I get started, may, I would like to make a note. The applicant is out of town and he told me he was going to have a representative here. And I'm not sure. Oh, there they are. I don't, I don't recognize you. Okay. I'll, okay, good. I'll proceed. I just was expecting Rod. So, so what we did here is after the feedback from the commission, we, we went back and amended section 16J. And we, as you can see on, on your copy there, commissioners, we added, we inserted our, the, kept in the RA5 zone as, as an addition to those zones that would allow for nonconforming lot of record to be eligible for a building permit. In doing that, we added two, two requirements. One that's specific to all zones and one that's specific to the RA5 zone. The one that's specific to all zones is the, a new requirement that a road dedication would be required for any nonconforming lot of record. They would, any land that a nonconforming lot, any land from nonconforming lot of record that lies in the right of way would have to be dedicated to the county. And so that'd be in any zone. And then specific to the RA5 zone, a new requirement would be that the lot area of the nonconforming lot of record at least have an area of 90% of the minimum area for a zoning lot for a one-family dwelling or manufactured home. Because this section actually is specific to one-family dwellings and manufactured zones, or manufactured homes. So those are the, the two additional requirements we added. And then we added a provision, I think that's helpful, especially in considering some of the discussion we had recently with the RA5 rezone discussions. There was a property owner that could have potentially been affected. He had just recently platted a lot. And if his property had been rezoned to the RA5 zone, he potentially may have rendered his, through the rezone, it may have rendered his lot unbuildable. And so we added a provision here that would, that basically protect a platted lot from, from being, becoming ineligible because of the change of the lot area or with requirement in a zone. So that's what we've, we've done here in this particular situation.
Thank you. I, I've reviewed it, went down through it, read it, talked with Rob, you know, about some of the ins and outs of it legally. And I, and I applaud you for the work on this. I, I also like the fact that we kept it narrow and that the ripple effect doesn't ripple all over the place, that we're, we're trying to keep it. I, I believe this is a, this is a victory for, for private property owners. And, and I, and I'd hope that, that you'd see it the same way. I'd love to hear from you, or Commissioner, if you have any questions for Brandon.
I, I know for, for me, there was a lot of concern coming in with this one. I feel it's been tightened down appropriately.
Yeah. Okay. Would you like to say anything? Or do you feel like you've, you hit water and you're good? Okay. Okay. All right. So a, a motion to be in order with, with the, and I believe the, the correct wording would be the red line version when it comes to the, the 1J7. Is that correct, Rob?
It was the red line version that was sent last night at 6:53 PM, I believe, or 6:23 PM.
And that one had that?
Yes, it had what we-
That kind of that?
What I showed you this morning.
Right. Okay.
Okay. I will move that we approve regular agenda item number two with the latest red line version.
Yes. And I, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Thanks for coming. Okay. Let's see. We already did that one? Okay, it looks like we're done there. All we need now is, there was no, there was no need for item number five and six, but we do need seven and eight.
Sorry. I was trying to talk on my phone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at, yeah, let's, let's look at, I put a note on there that we need to take action on number three on regular.
Yes. Yep. That was, I was going to bring that up. So I would move that we take action to refer the Utah County Commission, the proposed county land use ordinance tax amendment is contained in regular agenda item number three.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Thank you. Thanks for that, for making notes.
And I apologize about the mute. I'm trying to get an air conditioning. In the air conditioning, the announcer's gone crazy. I will then go ahead and move that we strike regular agenda items number five and six.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero.
I'll move that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting to discuss the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual or individuals for today's date at this location following completion of the regular agenda.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero.
I would approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss pending or recent weight unit medication for today's date. This location following the conclusion of the regular agenda.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. Okay. We now have, we do have a work session just to review the process, the outcomes with the Utah County Alternative Probation, the Ucap pilot project. So come on up. It was actually pretty, it was actually pretty fun for me to read down through this and see the successes. So before we even start, well done on some great work.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Deputy Cox for the Sheriff's Office.
Deputy Whiteley.
The Utah County Alternative Probation Program, we've been operating with participants for about 18 months. We've been working through a lot of different policy revisions. And speaking with the local judiciary and getting their buy-in has been great as well. We've, at times throughout the last 18 months, have been well above our originally designed maximum capacity and have had periods of extended wait lists where we were six, seven weeks out to even get somebody assessed. So we've had a lot of, a lot of interest and a lot of eligible participants. We, we go through some validated risk and need assessments to make sure that we're applying the correct program for each person individually as far as their mental health, substance abuse, and, and community supervision requirements. We, we operate on the established best practices and make sure it's designed specific to, to their needs.
So as far as training, this is where we've actually kind of evolved the most was from going to trainings and finding out those best practices and by making relationships with some of the other counties that are involved with similar sort of programs, but probably even more so other states and some of the contacts we've made. Currently, we have become certified through a company called LSCMI, and that's where we do our risk need analysis. We've become certified to do our own in-house LSCMI evaluations. And some of the other trainings that we've done, which kind of go hand in hand with that, is some of the motivational interviewing. And that's a behavior change coaching model. Those are generally combined together to create a sort of an industry standard with, with doing assessments. We've become involved with the APPA, which is the American Probation and Parole Association. And we've attended two of the national seminars, one we just got back from about a month ago. They are kind of, as I put in here, they're the gold standard as far as recognizing best practices. And we took a lot from, from going to, to the APPA conference. Some of the successes, the, the Ucap deputies highly encourage the program participants to further their education. As a minimum, the offenders are required to complete their GED. However, we've had many of them enroll in college, trade schools. This is something that we push. We push it on a personal level. We've sat down and had, assisted them filling out paperwork to get accepted into schools with their finances. That's something that we really push. On a personal level, that's important. And for the program, that's been huge for to reduce recidivism. One of our graduates has been accepted to medical school and is going to start at the end of the probation term. That's somebody we're very proud of. She's expressed on multiple occasions, she didn't feel this would have happened without the structure that we gave because she was kind of going off in a, in a bad direction. Some of our statistics on our assessments, we've done 102 currently active participants. We have 35. We have successfully completed 16 people, refused 74. And when I say refuse, that means they've refused to come into the program for the most part. Seven in waiting.
Do you track those, those 74?
Yes.
Yeah. And he's actually going to go into that. That's, that's part of our control group where we compare our statistics.
Okay.
Approximately 3,400 contacts we've made. And again, this is starting from zero at the beginning of this and snowballing into a, a full, full program.
As far as the, the data tracking for recidivism, meaning reoffense, new arrests, new convictions, we have the 49 participants that we've been tracking. These numbers are as of June, so they will have changed a little bit. But there's, there's a lot that goes into, you know, doing the full local and, and national criminal history checks on every person individually. At that time, we had 52 reference subjects. And so the, you know, pretty similar numbers as far as the two groups that we're providing, or that we were comparing. Similar criminal histories, similar risk, similar risk levels. We really wanted to try and make sure to the greatest extent possible with how small the numbers are, that we were comparing apples to apples. So of the participants that we've been working with, there were five arrests and four convictions. Of the control group, there were 60 arrests and 27 convictions. It's a pretty drastic difference between the two groups.
I wish we could show the chart.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it right now.
It's, it's something that we're very proud of. This is, I would say this is a much more drastic change than would traditionally be recognized. I think as time goes on and those numbers increase, I'm sure those, those numbers will, will change a little bit. But I think it's indicative of the success of the model. And so we've had 91% reduction in arrests and an 84% reduction in, in convictions. So that's, that's very exciting for us. We're, we're very optimistic about the future and continuing to apply this model to different groups. We initially set up a series of pretty strict artificial barriers to limit the number of people coming in because we had such limited space. And because of those, that list of requirements, there are a lot of people that could really use the help that don't qualify because we just don't have room for them. So, but continuing to, to use the evidence-based approach and just trying to continually educate ourselves. And I feel like there's a, there's a bright future for it. So.
So, so you, you said that there's a lot, there's a lot more people that would probably accept this program? Do you have numbers on that?
So that's something we've tried to work with, with the county attorney's office, and they've been great. There are, there are so many people coming in and coming through that we, we can't have any property or person crimes attached to it. It has to have a drug offense. They have to have certain criminal history requirements. And we did that just to limit the numbers. Once we have more space and we kind of open up some of those restrictions, it would be well beyond what we could, we could take with our current capacity. And the other thing is we haven't been pushing the program at all. This has been completely passive. We haven't been, you know, meeting with public defender's office or meeting with the judges at their round tables to, we haven't presented this to them yet. And I feel like once we do that, we'll probably be kind of inundated with applications again. And we don't want to have such a long waiting list that it then becomes this impossible thing to get into. So that's, that's kind of part of the reason for approaching it the way we have.
We really don't want to present it to somebody and then tell them they can't have it because of capacity issues. That's what it kind of boils down to.
Yeah.
A brief fiscal review of where we're at. And a lot of these numbers have changed as we've been able to gather new data since, since this report was completed. And I'm sure we've talked a lot about costs of incarceration and prosecution costs and, and all of the ancillary costs in the community that, that come along with somebody committing a crime. DrugsOfAbuse.gov did a study where they, they looked at programs like this. And they said for every dollar that is invested in a program like this, you can save $12 in, in all of those costs kind of combined. Just looking at the numbers from our control groups, the amount of costs that went into prosecution, loss of property, there were, there were some person crimes involved in those as well. Those 60 arrests have a very far-reaching effect on the community that we live in. And being able to reduce that number in our control group to five, I feel like is, it's almost impossible to calculate that, that cost savings and benefit. The traditional clean events process would generally have like four or five court hearings attached to it. We generally have one at the end. And so just saving all of those days in court and the time in jail and the, the other costs to the community that go along with, with those arrests, it's, we're, it's something we're very proud of. And we're looking forward to see what else it can do.
So how long have you been doing it?
So we're 18 months right now. And we, we were initially set up for a two-year pilot. So we're getting close to the end of that. I'm sure our department administrators will be approaching with, with new proposals for that.
Right.
Some of the testimonials, I'm sure you had a chance to read through. This is kind of where we become, where we really get our most job satisfaction from is seeing what we, our, our beginning product to the end product and mainly some of the attitude changes we've seen. And if I can read this, I would say quote, I'm going to leave out one word. Honestly, I feel like getting caught and getting on probation was a blessing in disguise. Because like looking at my life now and looking at my life six months ago, it's a complete 180 chain. I just wanted to thank you personally for helping me out. At first, I may have been kind of a jerk, let's say, or had a bad attitude. But you guys have definitely helped me out with where I am headed now. And then I had another quote here. It says, I have, I haven't been drinking or smoking. I feel proud of myself for that. I hadn't been sober for over two years when I started this program. And it helps me move forward in life, whereas before I was feeling stuck and limbo.
Something else I, I really wanted to recognize and talk about is what I feel is the core for the success of the program. And that's the collaboration with county substance abuse, with mental health, with the prosecutor's office, with the public defenders, everybody working together, I feel like is what makes this work. And I just wanted to thank substance abuse for everything that, that they do. And they've been a great partner in this. And we're very excited and proud of where we've got to at this point. So.
All right. Well done. I got one question for you.
Sure.
So when you're doing your tracking, is it just Utah County? Or are you able to go, because not everyone lives in the state, is right in Utah County. I'm sure it goes other places. So if they get arrested in another county, are you able to pull that as well?
So some of the arrests are hard to find, but any conviction we would be able to find. And usually those arrests will show up. It just may take a little while. And so that's why we're continually doing these checks on everybody so that we have good data to compare. The only people that we take an application for, they have to live in Utah County. And so- And so we've got, that doesn't mean they've committed crimes, haven't committed crimes outside of Utah County, but we do check outside of Utah County so that we have a state and nationwide databases that we have access to, to, to do that. But having, only accepting people that live in Utah County gives us kind of a better local population to compare how it is for us here in, in our specific community.
In addition to that, there's only two of us, so if there's somebody outside of the county, out of the county.
Right.
There's time constraints to be working with.
Yes. Well, well done. Good job.
And I would echo that. Well done. Thank you for all your hard work on it.
That's some good information. Okay, now, now we're, we're open for a public comment. Is there any, any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will, we'll move into our, in our closed sessions. Thank you for being with us today.